We're set to go?
Oh, what are you gonna laugh at on the computer?
The planning commission meeting for October twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen is called to order. And I guess we jump right to our first item on the agenda.
Well, you could ask if there's anybody in the audience, just to get it out of the way.
Just to get that out of the way. Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments to make about items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward to the first item on our agenda, which is the annexation of Oregon City Golf Course AN dash sixteen dash zero 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 three. And Pete, would this be the appropriate time to read the script?
It's not land use though.
Yes, it would. It's a...
It'd be the appropriate time, yes.
Yep.
Okay. So... Public hearing on the land use application, which I just read, is scheduled tonight. A staff report has been prepared for each application, for this application, and has been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so that the city will notify you of its final decision. For the record, the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the state land use board of appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in Circuit Court. And so for the record, we will now open the hearing on AN dash sixteen dash zero zero three. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest? And has any commissioner visited the site? Bob?
When I was a, just got out of the Marine Corps, I hold the all-time highest record out there on that golf course. And I wish that to be expunged if I could.
Very nice.
That's as close as I'm gonna comment on that.
Was that the record for the most lost balls or?
Everything included.
Oh, everything? Okay.
Divots, walking across the green, just everything.
Sounds dangerous.
Zach?
Nothing to declare. I've visited the site. I'm familiar. I'm out there often.
Tom?
Nothing really solid to declare. I'm a pitch and putt golfer, so I've never been there. I just drive by it a lot.
Denise?
I have no ex parte contacts or no contacts of any sort with regard to this particular property, and I am very aware of where it is and have not been on the property, but I'm familiar with it.
Damon?
Grew up playing golf out there. I'm a friend of the Herburgers and Rose. Haven't really interacted about this since the last annexation attempt. So, other than that, I've been out at the site and probably came close to Bob's record. At least for lost balls, that canyon of yours just sucks them in.
So Commissioner, maybe you were on the city commission when this was reviewed last time with plan?
City. Because it went down with the Park Place one. You were on the city.
I don't, I don't know when it was, so I was, I don't know.
Doug Neely was there.
Yeah, it was, it was city commission. It was when I was running for reelection, so it was two thousand eightyish.
And I think I was competing with Bob for the record of most shots. Most of my play was off the course. Anyway, had some good times out there. Nothing else to declare. Does anyone in the audience wish to question the commissioners on their declarations? Okay, seeing none. Pete, do we have a staff report?
Yeah, we have a brief staff report.
Before you jump into the staff report, could you, I don't know what this is.
Yeah, I'm gonna explain what that stuff is. So, we are going to be submitting some additional items into the record this evening, and those are before you. The first memorandum, the applicant's representative Dow is a memorandum with findings with respect to Senate Bill fifteen seventy-three. And that's the recently passed Senate bill which allows us certain annexations to bypass voter approval for cities that have voter-approved annexations if they meet certain criteria that's specified in that bill. And this memorandum was submitted to staff, but not attached to your packet. So, we're including that in the record. And we are also going to submit some items, including an email from the applicant with respect to the staff report. And this evening, we received comments from planning commissioner Paul Espy, who couldn't be with us this evening because he has a planning commission meeting in Lake Oswego. And his comments are part of the record this evening, too. So, we are going to be requesting, staff is requesting a continuance of this, this evening. Not just because we have additional items to consider, but also importantly because the public notice requirement in the form of the land use sign for the property was not posted on the property in the requisite amount of time, twenty-one days prior to the public hearing. All the other public notices were done in accordance with the city code, but the land use signs were not posted. So, for that reason, we are recommending a continuance of the public hearing to allow time to meet our public notice requirements. We're recommending that the planning commission hear from the applicant. I'm gonna present a brief overview of the proposal. I'm not gonna get into great details on the revised, on the findings that are recommended. We're going to come back with revised recommended findings, which will be available for public review and comment on November seventh. And we'll be providing a more detailed presentation on those recommended findings and the reasons for decision on November fourteenth. As well as the applicant will be providing a more detailed presentation on the proposal that evening, too. Brownstone Development is here. Randy Myers is here and is gonna talk to you tonight.
I've been hearing talk from some of the representatives in Salem that there's a review going on on fifteen, Senate Bill fifteen seventy-three, that they're reviewing, that there might be an over, it might be overturned at some point by another vote. Does that impact it if we were to decide this at this point? Does it kidnap citizens and get vote on this again? Or is this happened before that it could be overturned?
Carrie, do you want to talk to her?
The soonest that the legislature could take action will be April, and this decision will be made by then.
And so it could go forward even if, even if that says this was wrong and it could be reviewed?
If the seventeen, fifteen seventy-three was rescinded.
Okay. So also, are we gonna go over, you said you're gonna give a quick review and they're gonna speak, so are we gonna go through all, also everything else tonight? Okay, because I hate to have that happen without everybody here to hear.
Right.
I have, just so I understand where all the pieces are on the board. This memo is from?
The applicant's representative.
Who is?
Dow Reed Stapleton.
No, I mean, this, this person specifically, Kelly Hussaini. No, this says Sarah or Sarah.
Oh, Sarah Breakstone, yeah.
Who, who is she?
She's a land use planner who worked for Dow, who drafted the application.
Thank you. And then Kelly Hussaini is?
Applicant's attorney.
Okay, thank you. That just, I just trying to figure out who's, who's on first.
Yeah, there's a lot of players.
And they aren't here tonight, but they will be speaking.
I know, there's no title after this, so I'm thinking, okay, is this just some random person? I don't know.
A lot of players in on this one.
You didn't ask who this Paul Espy person is.
I know who that person is, so that's okay. I did know who that was, but I didn't understand who the other people were and how they, how, how it was involved.
Fair question.
Okay. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Oh, and just to answer your, to, sorry, but Commissioner Griff, you had questioned whether or not we were doing quasi judicial hearing procedures and just for the planning commissions.
And the public.
And the public's discussion. We are processing this annexation as a type four quasi judicial hearing. Whether or not it's quasi judicial or legislative has to do with the size of the parcel. And since this is a fairly large parcel, but not as big as the Beaver Creek Concept Plan area, for example, we are erring on the side of caution and processing it as a quasi judicial hearing. So you will make a recommendation on this to city commission, and then city commission will hold hearings and make a decision on your recommendation. So it will be similar to what we did in Beaver Creek, but it will be a quasi judicial decision rather than a legislative one. So we will disclose ex parte contacts as part of the process.
As usual, thorough and very clear. Thank you so much, because I appreciate it, and I know that the public out there appreciates it.
So with so few people in the public tonight, do each time we meet, do we have to read that and go through the ex parte?
And he does one.
Don't you have it memorized right now?
I do, but this is a little bit different.
Yeah.
This has been voted on a few times, so.
I think we all have it memorized.
Okay, so I'm gonna show you some maps and aerial photos. You can see the site here currently. It's the Oregon City Golf Course, and it's, there is the clubhouse there. There are two existing homes, and Trimble Creek crosses the northeast quadrant there.
You're pointing to them?
I am not pointing to them. I've got another slide.
You said the clubhouse there, and I said, okay, where is the there there?
I know the clubhouse.
Get this. Oh, there we go. You'll have to look behind you, but this is the clubhouse.
Alrighty.
This is one existing home on a property that's on a separate tax lot, and this is the second existing home on the property that's on a separate tax lot. So, there are four tax lots here. The large one to the north, large one to the south, and the two house lots here. Beaver Creek, the annexation proposal includes the right-of-way of Beaver Creek Road. So it's approximately two thousand square feet of that proposed for annexation. And the county has consented to the annexation and signed the land use application for the right-of-way because it is currently under Clackamas County jurisdiction. Brief description of the proposal here.
Can you get rid of that little box?
Try that, get rid of that.
He's working on it.
Thanks.
There are applicants only requesting annexation. No zone changes proposed at this time. So, we would be recommending that the existing county zoning be maintained on the property.
Which is?
I'm gonna get into that.
He's getting it.
Four tax lots totaling approximately one hundred and seventeen acres. Property is contiguous to the city and does not create any county islands. And your staff report, our staff report includes findings for the following sections of applicable criteria. Oregon City Municipal Code fourteen oh four oh five oh, annexation procedures and grounds. Metro Code three oh nine, local government boundary changes. Oregon Revised Statutes two two two, which is boundary changes, merges, and consolidations. And we've included a section of findings for compliance with the transportation planning rule. Now, transportation planning rule applies when there's zone change is proposed. So if there's no zone change proposed for the property, they can defer compliance until the time of zone change. The main section of code that we mentioned is the grounds in Oregon City Municipal Code fourteen oh four oh six oh. You have to show that you have adequate access to the property. Your proposal needs to comply with the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. In this case, that means the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, which is not yet acknowledged due to the second Luba appeal. And subsequently, the comprehensive plan designation for the property is future urban. I'll show you what that looks like. Adequacy and availability of public facilities and services. I'm not gonna go into great detail on this, but we do make findings for compliance with our relevant public facilities master plans. We have to discuss goal five compliance as well as whether there are any wetlands, floodlands, floodplains, steep slopes on the property, cultural, historic, natural resource areas that might be affected by urbanization of the subject property, and the lack of significant adverse effects on the economic, social, and physical environment of the community by the overall impact of the annexation. As I mentioned, the additional items that we submitted to the record. First one is, I'm gonna call it Exhibit Eight. That is the applicant's memorandum with respect to Senate Bill fifteen seventy-three. The applicant is proposing a condition of approval that would be moving forward to the city commission so that the annexation would not be filed with the Secretary of State until the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan is acknowledged. So, we could move forward through planning commission and city commission and be approved, but then not be filed with the Secretary of State until the Luba appeal and the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan zoning is implemented and then acknowledged. Because the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan will not be an acknowledged and implemented plan until zoning is drafted and that sort of thing. The applicant had made some comments on the staff report. We agree with all those comments, and we'd be making those revisions. And I would like to briefly go into detail, not, not great detail, but on Commissioner Espy's comments that he emailed to us this evening. He wanted us to provide additional detail on transportation facilities, sanitary sewer facilities, what the applicants are proposing to do in terms of following the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, what the status is of the city's agreement with the county with respect to jurisdiction of Beaver Creek Road. This is partly related to the current urban growth management agreement that we have. Commissioner Espy felt that a two-inch lift requirement under the urban growth management agreement is not adequate for the roadway and is likely to be in need of major roadbed improvements. Concern about water availability, the future urbanization of the area. And he wanted specific information on the burden on fire, police, and emergency services. We did get into that in the staff report, but he wanted to know whether specifically stated whether they can accommodate development at the future urbanizable levels. Also wanted information with respect to the neighborhood contact or neighborhood association meeting that was in the application. And like more feedback on the school capacity issue, which I know you've been concerned about. And finally, his concern with respect to criteria fourteen point oh four oh five oh E seven A through G. So, those are pretty significant comments from Commissioner Espy, and we are going to look further into our staff report and provide more detail in response to those. So just want to show you the surrounding comprehensive plan designations. You can see that the majority of this area east of Beaver Creek Road here that's colored gray is designated future urban on the city's comprehensive plan. There's one parcel there across from the high school at Myers Road, which is already in the city and zoned MUC. And that is the orange-colored parcel there. I'm gonna show you a slide.
Is that where those apartments are supposed to be going?
Yeah, that's where the apartment.
The alleged apartments, I think.
Yeah. Campus industrial comprehensive plan designation is pretty significant in this area. It surrounds the college. The college is institutional. You've got various designations for residential density there. Directly across Beaver Creek Road from the subject site is low-density residential, a light yellow color. And then as you move closer west into the city, you've got various higher-density residential designations. Beaver Creek Road, obviously the main transportation corridor to serve the site, but also in the transportation system plan and the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, the future transportation network for this area would provide for collector roads east-west through the site and a local street grid that would meet city standards. The zoning designations on this map are a little more detailed. As I said, the large parcel on the north is currently zoned timber under county. It's fifty-one acres. And the main clubhouse area to the south with the two homes is zoned future urban ten. Those are, the future urban ten is a holding zone. It says you can't develop or subdivide on less than ten acres until urban services are available to serve the property. So that's a zone that we implement within the urban growth boundary, and the county maintains that zone. We're recommending that those two zones be maintained and administered by the city for the foreseeable future until the zoning that implements the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan can be adopted through a separate legislative process. As you can see, the remainder of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area is also FU ten in the county, not yet annexed to the city. And you can see the various zoning designations that are applied within the city and that. This is the conceptual land use diagram that was adopted by the city for Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. I'm gonna zoom in on it. But the area that we're proposing for annexation here is part of the, what are called the east mixed-use neighborhood and west mixed-use neighborhood. There's also the two environmentally sensitive resource areas shown there where Trimble Creek flows. And those areas would be essentially not developed and maintained as open space. They're to be preserved as habitat areas, and they're also fairly steep. West of the annexation property, you have the main street area where Glen Oak Road would extend through the site. And then further to the north, you get into the employment zones. So the blue areas to the north there are called the northern industrial campus. And then you have the mixed employment village. A portion of that mixed employment village purple area is the area that was zoned MUC one, where the apartments is gonna eventually be built right across from the high school. So, these are the conceptual land use areas. The majority of the site is proposed to be residential, but it would have some components of mixed use to serve this area. And that zoning has not been drafted or implemented yet. So, once the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan is through the Luba appeal, we can contemplate moving forward with a zoning for that and to implement these land use designations.
Aren't you forgetting one big elephant in the room?
Yeah, probably.
Are you getting to the elephant?
Transportation.
That's the elephant?
Yep. So, as we've discussed, the transportation planning rule that requires when you zone property, you've gotta meet the statewide mobility standards, which have been adopted for intersections that are administered by ODOT. And whenever there's a, consider a failing intersection, ODOT will require that the city not exceed its current permitted uses under our zoning designation. So, we can currently only allow development to move forward and zone changes that cap the number of vehicle trips under the current zoning. Anything that exceeds that will be in violation of those mobility standards. On top of that, the city is just, just put out a, well, I don't know if we've just put it out. We're, we're going to be working on alternative mobility standards with ODOT to be able to allow congestion to proceed in a manner that still allows the city to develop and transportation facilities to be safe. This would be about at least a year-long process. It hasn't begun yet. And it affects not just Oregon City, but all cities that have a similar problem within the Portland metro area. But until that can be done, we can't approve any zone changes in this area, and certainly can't approve any further development. So, the staff report takes note of that. And for that reason, the recommended findings. Talk about TPR compliance and how we will not be zoning this property until all the mobility standards can be met under the transportation planning rule. Hello?
Yeah, Pete, I, I read over Paul's report about transportation. I've been listening to you. Early on, I had a question back then. Are you not done? Are you done with the staff report? It's about transportation. I had a question about it while it was on it.
Yeah, this is my last slide.
Sorry.
And I've already, I've already spoken about this, so I'm done, but I'm willing to ask.
Well, about the transportation, I was wondering about this. I made some notes to myself back, one of the first two slides or so. I remember when the Beaver Creek Concept Plan was before us. I think that this room was filled with people concerned about transportation. And I told everybody that back then, don't worry, you get to vote on it. But the governor kinda took that away from the citizens' rights. So now we have no zone change, but you wanna have an annexation. But how can you have an annexation without a transportation plan still? I know what you're saying, that it's because we haven't adopted the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. But how can you allow an annexation when you don't have any plans for the transportation yet in that area? I'm confused on that.
Well, we did adopt the transportation system plan taking into account the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. And so all of the Kittleson Associates reports that were done and all of the projections that were done out to twenty forty, I believe, for the TSP, took that into account, and they did concept-level planning based on an assumption of land use. And so we have an adopted plan. We have a series of recommended improvements to the transportation system plan. We have funding estimates for what those will cost. And we've identified, you know, a variety of ways to pay for it. But we haven't gotten to the detailed point of how to pay for it yet because we don't have a detailed development proposal. At this level of review, annexation, we're showing compliance with comprehensive plan. We're not at the point of showing compliance with subdivision review criteria or detailed land use criteria at this point.
As I understand, they usually have system administration charges or, and that, that's paid for by the developers. SDCs, yeah.
And SDCs are used to fund transportation improvements that are needed to build capacity into the city. And SDCs are used to fund transportation improvements that are needed to build capacity into the system. But the applicant is also responsible for building physical improvements associated with their development at the time that they propose something. So that would include widening of Beaver Creek Road, any collector level roads or local roads that need to be built through the site. A standard requirement of a future land use approval process.
So those wishing annex need to pay for that?
The, the, the future developer pays for that, yeah.
I see.
Capital improvement program that the city has, which is sort of like the big, large budget for all public facilities, transportation, sewer, water, stormwater. That is, that is based on the best level planning estimates that we have. So Beaver Creek Road concept plan, which was done in two thousand and seven, was updated subsequently when the water master plan was adopted in two thousand and twelve. Then you had the sanitary sewer master plan in two thousand and thirteen, transportation system plan in two thousand and thirteen, and then the stormwater and grading design standards. We don't have an update yet on the stormwater master plan, but that is in the works right now. So in terms of sewer, water and transportation, we have very up-to-date public facilities. Master plan's adopted for this in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. And those, those, those figures are included in the staff report that we, we gave you.
So Pete, in other words, when we have system development charges, they all go into a general bucket? And I mean, what I was thinking is you've got the Park Place concept plans, all those roads, you've got this one. And this is a pretty large annexation. I think it's almost equal to, to Park Place. And then you've got South End. Is there going to be enough money in that, that system development charges to supply all these roads and all this infrastructure?
I couldn't tell you without doing a little more digging on that, but.
That's a lot of building in the next three years of roads.
The assumption is that those SDCs.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
The, um, this is a, this is a step in the development process, right? I mean, we're sort of taking this in, in little bite-sized steps. And no development can occur at the levels, urban levels identified in the Beaver Creek concept plan if this is approved. In order to, no development can occur at the urban levels identified in the Beaver Creek concept plan until a zone change occurs. So all we're doing is bringing the land into the city right now. In order to develop it, it has to have a zone change. In order to get a zone change, you trigger the transportation system or transportation planning rule and all the goals and the whole enchilada.
That helps.
And so at this point, the applicant's position is no development is going to occur.
Based on the current zoning.
Based on the current FU ten zoning.
You can only have five houses on that site, right?
Right.
Because it's ten.
Right.
Ten acres per house. And there's ten, there's fifty acres.
There's a hundred and seventeen.
Okay, well, in that.
Yeah, but isn't it highly doubtful the county's going to, to, to approve any applications for any new homes that would be on septic systems? I, I, I can't see that happening.
So, so I, I, I think, I, I'm just kind of trying to clarify.
And the, and the conditions say, the condi, I think the conditions say that no land divisions can occur.
Right.
Right.
So we're not going to increase the demand on this, on the utilities with this annexation.
But eventually it will. But that's under, once it's brought in.
Well, it has to be annexed and then it has to be zone changed.
I see.
Once it is zone changed, then it can be developed. But we are, we, we've done the Beaver Creek concept plan, right? Then we've got to implement that with some zoning code. We haven't drafted the zoning code that will apply to this property. We haven't even drafted it yet. It's got to draft it. Then we've got to apply it to this property. Then development can occur. So.
So right now, we're basically three steps away from development actually happening.
Correct.
Four. Cause you've got, you know, annexation, zoning. Four, including the annexation.
Including the land division. Are you talking about the subdivision? Okay, so we've got the, we've got the zoning being applied and then we've got the land subdivision that would happen.
Does Luba have any impact on all of this annexation? No, I know it's an appeal, but I'm just wondering. I'm trying to understand it all.
Luba does not have anything to do with annexations.
Well, only if, if, if somebody appealed our decision.
I see.
To Luba.
Okay, I'm just trying to put it together.
So I think that the, the, the real question for you all, and we can go back and look at the code, but it's how, how much detail do you need now? And in terms of future urbanization, knowing that this is one step in that process, one step with no development occurring. In the olden days, we used to require none because the voter, it used to go to the voters.
Citizens had the rights.
And so we didn't want to make the applicants have to pay a lot of money to do a lot of studies out the gate when they had to get it past the voters. Now we don't have that. So do we change what we require in terms of a showing of utility adequacy? I mean, my counsel has been, yes, I think so, a little bit. But how far down that road is going to be up for you, up to you and the city commission to decide.
Okay. Thank you, I'm just trying to clarify it.
Sure.
I, I don't, I, I have lots of things.
Questions for staff?
I do, but I, I'm not, not right now. I'll wait until it's our discussion and people can say what they want to say and then.
Okay, well, I, I would say right now.
I'll make copious notes.
We're, we're responding to staff presentation.
And that's why I had to ask him questions about.
Any other questions responding to staff presentation? Okay. Guess we can hear from the applicant.
Well, wait a minute, I do actually have one thing.
You do?
For the, for Carrie. So I guess one of the things that I find puzzling and I have over, over, over the long-term is that we always get these applications that come in and I will do air quotes, there is no development being proposed at this time. And that may be on its face be factually correct, but I think my gut is telling me that that's not really correct because why would a developer be coming in requesting annexation if they didn't have some idea in mind down the road to develop?
And that's why I was getting at with transportation.
So I mean, it's just one of those, it, 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 it just seems to me like it's an oxymoron in a way to me, you know, from a, from a planning, from a planning standpoint.
I, I don't think that, they're not going to go through this if they're planning to keep their FU ten.
Oh, no, I'm sure they won't.
So, so, so this is, but this is one step in a multi, my point is this is one step in a multi-step process. And we have to find the balance of how much detail we want in terms of utility demand as we move through this process. And theoretically, that demand should become more clear as we move through the process.
And annexations, where you get into this discussion about quasi judicial versus legislative. We've always, in the past, talked about, and what's in the code is a requirement for a positive balance of factors made by this city commission. So they are quite discretionary decisions. And they're, you know, to the extent that we can, we talk about the assumptions that the planning commission and the city commission are willing to make in the process. And if it's clear that something is not going to pan out in terms of a positive balance of factors, then conditions of approval can be incorporated. And we've recommended, in this situation, you know, fifteen findings and four conditions that together would form the basis for that positive balance of factors. So. I will elaborate on what those are at the next hearing. Okay. Yeah. Any other questions for staff or council at this time?
Just one for a quick clarification.
Okay.
Going to the, the Sane memo, the email that we got.
Okay.
Refers to item number five, which is also on page forty. Pete, it's had the condition of approval we proposed for Senate Bill fifteen seventy-three.
Yeah, and I'm not comfortable with that.
Well, I'm just.
That's it.
So the condition of approval that they proposed in the Dallas staff report was that the annexation of this territory will not be filed with Secretary of State until the Beaver Creek Road concept plan is acknowledged.
Right, so that would be sixteen.
Yes.
It'd be condition of approval sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's where it's going. It's not another bullet under the staff recommendation.
Right, okay.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable with that.
I just wanted to know where you were just going to put it.
I wanted to put it anywhere.
Okay, so at this time, we will hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Randy Myers, Brownstone, New Beverly. Number forty-seven North State Street, Lake Oswego. Thank you for taking time tonight to, to meet with all of us. I'm going to be pretty short here, but we do agree with the staff's findings, recommendations for approval of this process. We also concur with the staff, we, your, your city staff and our team, the development team has agreed with the postponement or the continuation for mid-November, at which time we'll be making a more comprehensive display. But it gives the staff additional time to, to review everything. But I'll be open for any questions if you have any later on.
Do you have anything else to add?
At this time, not really. We just agree with the staff report and.
You do agree?
Of course.
You do agree, okay.
Well, he did say he did disagree, but that I think was just a flip of the tongue.
We agree with the staff report, absolutely.
Words are important.
But I will be available for any questions that you might have.
Okay.
So actually, it's not a question, just as a, so you know, some of what the commission has concerns about is that we have had people and applicants and groups come in and then the next thing we know, the property is completely clear cut. The prop, the buildings have been torn down. I mentioned in the Beaver Creek concept plan that I thought that some historic inventory work needed to be done on the property. So I can tell you that if, you know, next time I drive down there and I don't see anything on the site, we're going to be very, very unhappy up here. We have several people on this commission who have, who are big tree people.
Please, you have nothing to worry about.
Just as an FYI, just, I've said that every application we've had because it just keeps happening all the time and nobody's listening. So just getting it on the record.
Your comments, but you have no worries.
Thank you.
I don't know, there's a few trees I wouldn't mind getting out of there.
We're not going to comment about your bad golf game right now, so.
You're talking about the ones between the fairways?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. I understand that.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So I do not have anybody else signed up at this time. Does anybody else want to testify? So at this time, we'll hear from Christine Kuzinski. Sure. She's got lots of paperwork. She usually does. Long time no see. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Christine Kuzinski, Incorporated, Clackamas County. Before I start my testimony, I actually wanted also to request that the hearing be continued and left open for further testimony. My reason for this is when Oregon City placed Holly Lane, Maple Lane and Thayer Roads into the Beaver Creek Road concept plan and into its TSP upgrade, these roads became part of the concept plan development. Therefore, the property owners on Holly Lane, Maple Lane and Thayer Road should have been noticed by the city for the hearings to propose annexation of the Oregon City Golf Course. These property owners all sit within three hundred feet of Holly, Maple Lane and Thayer. The concept plan can never be developed without first developing all three of these streets. I put the following annexation factors should be considered. Adequacy of access to site. Without the roads, there is no access. Adequacy and availability of public facilities and services to service potential development. Without the roads, there's no, there would be no potential development. Provide adequate public information and sufficient time for public review and maximize city involvement in the annexation review process. Do you want me to go on with my testimony? Okay. I had my testimony kind of partially ready for tonight and then I found out there would be a continuance. And so what I'm going to do is shelve that for tonight so that I can get you a more complete package next week so that you can study everything I'm going to submit.
Thank you.
So in the meantime, I thought I would talk to you a little bit about landslide insurance. You've heard me talk so much about it in regards to Holly Lane and you probably wonder what I'm talking about. In nineteen ninety-six and ninety-seven, the floods that went across the nation just devastated so many states. After that, insurance companies all pulled out of writing landslide insurance because they lost a lot of money and it was no longer lucrative. Landslide insurance is expensive. For instance, in California, a deductible can be two point five percent of a home value. That would be seventy-five hundred dollars just for the deductible for a three hundred thousand dollar home. It would be four hundred dollars additional per year for each one hundred thousand dollars of value. Because most of the insurance companies or the underwriters pulled out, pretty much the only one that's left in the world is Lloyds of London. They have a que, a question on their application. Do you live within a mile of a previous landslide? And they're using dogami, LiDAR maps. So the minute you apply, they pull your address up and they can tell whether you tell the truth or lie anyway. In my instance, I don't even live near a landslide. My property is fine, but I got denied because Lloyds of London said, you live within six large previous landslides, no coverage. This was true in California. Much of this can be found on the internet. It's happening everywhere. Besides landslide insurance, people need flood insurance. Landslide insurance will not pay for a mudslide or a mud flow, only under certain instances. So now we're going to consider flood insurance, which actually our US government is considering kind of coming back on because it's too expensive for them. By the time you add homeowner's insurance, earthquake insurance, landslide insurance and flood insurance, your affordable homes that you're trying to build are now no longer affordable. Damage to a home in a landslide is catastrophic. If your whole house burns down, the only thing they have to replace is the home. But in a landslide, what happens, even if you have insurance, you get all this money to repair, but now you've got to fix your driveway because you can't get, drive your car into your home. You have to fix all your water pipes and your sewer lines that have been severed. And you have all this infrastructure to fix. By the time you pay for that, then you look at your house and say, well, where's the money now to fix my home? This is a lot of the reason why people walk away from their homes. Lawsuits are not being won. The pictures that I, I gave out to you were the To Williger landslide. And what happened was there was a home up on To Williger and it fell on the home below it. The people up above, or the people down below said, well, it's because their sprinklers have a leak. And so there were lawsuits that, that came about. All the insurance companies denied coverage. There was, it turned out with all the lawsuits that the people got nothing, no one got anything, and yet homes continue to fall. So the city of Portland had to come in free, gratis, and fix everything, and put up retaining walls, and some of the people went bankrupt and walked away from their homes. There was one home in Estacada a few years ago that had a terrible landslide. It leveled the whole house. But what happened is they had a propane tank in the pa, in the back of their home, and the propane tank was severed and set the house on fire. Those damages were paid by the fire insurance, but never would have been covered by the landslide insurance. State law, one oh five point four six five, is the property disclosure statement. If I sell my home, and I know that I'm on a landslide or in a zone, it's up to me to disclose to a new property buyer that I live in a landslide zone. You may want to check with your insurance company to see if you can get insurance.
Christine, your time has expired, so if you could conclude quickly, that would be good.
Okay. Regarding title insurance, people are given two to five inches worth of paper. They're asked to sign it right away. Even if they could read it, they would not understand landslides. So that's a little bit of the reason why people can't get life, or landslide insurance. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. The next person I have is Jason Pompel.
Is it Pomella, Pompey?
Jason Pompel, one five six four four South Old Acres Lane. This is in my front yard. My mo, my property line is the edge of the golf course. And both like Tom and Denise have mentioned or alluded to, we're getting a cart before a horse. We know that there's gonna be a zoning change. There's this window right now that a developer could potentially move something through without the public vote. And what I would encourage is, this goes through a public vote, like some of the other annexations we've had on South End. You know, let, let the, let the city know. I used to live in Kenema. I watched development go sideways really quick down there, and continues to go sideways. That's why I don't live in, in Kenema anymore, because the planning commission and the city council could not control the developers down there. Look at the, the wetlands that have been bulldozed down there at Fifth and Miller. My concern is, is that there's a lot of impact for this huge development. My kids went to school through the Oregon City School District, and it's gonna stress a very small community. And if we don't have a real plan in place before you annex it, the city's gonna be stuck with this annex, and then try to undo it, which at that time, it would be harder to do. I think you need to run it to a vote, but the people that are gonna have to pay for this and bail it out have some say before it comes in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to testify at this time. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, we have had a request for continuance. Do you want to have any discussion before we put a motion on that?
I guess I'll put it in motion. Are you gonna put it in motion, or should I?
No, I wanted to have some discussion.
You want to have some discussion before we put a motion? Okay.
Are we... Are you closing this portion of the public hearing so we can have discussion?
Well, the public record will remain open, and we can close the public hearing for this evening.
Yes.
You don't want to see your comments till next week, are they the time?
No.
Okay.
So... You have comments that you want to discuss?
Are we closing the public hearing?
Public hearing is closed for this evening. Record is open until the next hearing.
Is that the correct term?
Okay.
So I guess part of what I'm looking at, and I read Pete's report, and I guess part of what I'm concerned about is that one of the very things that was brought before us by another planning commissioner is that, I'm not sure how we can, well, let me back up. Going through what we went through with the Beaver Creek Road Master Plan doesn't mean, in my mind, that once we adopt it, boom, then development can occur, because we have so many other hurdles that have to be achieved before anything can happen. And I remember quite a lengthy discussion that, that my colleague at the end of the bench there brought up about transportation. And since he sits on the Transportation Advisory Committee, he's one that's in the know about that. And it seems to me that while I was making light of it being the elephant in the room, I'm, I'm very serious about the fact that it is the elephant in the room. And we were, or at least I was felt assured that we would not be even looking at any sort of development or any future requests for development until we had really thoroughly gone through the mobility issue. And to me, with a failing intersection, and this being at the very end of the urban growth boundary, to me, it seems like that the, at least the way that I was taught, is that you do development in a progressive manner, and you don't start at the end, and then hopefully everything else fills in at the begin, in the middle. I, I, I guess I'm looking at, at this from the standpoint of that I support development, and I support many parts of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. But it seems to me that we do have the cart before the horse. And I'm, I'm, I just, I am not comfortable with the condition as, as suggested by the applicant's land use plan, or that, to me, just, it's just not sitting well with me at the moment. So I, I think there's a lot of things that, that haven't happened, and I think that the comment about merely identifying public facilities does not make them adequate. Sure, we have master plans. We have lots of master plans, but we don't have the ability nor the money. And believe me, systems development charges don't have anything to do with getting facilities to, to development areas. They're, they're the fees that they pay afterwards. It's not that you pay the fee and then presto, change-o. We get all this great development and, and the, and the facilities. I mean, we've got stuff on Warner Parrot Road, as you recall, that we have put a moratorium on because we do not have adequate facilities in that area. There's the, several people along Holmes Lane and going back to in the Singer Creek area. They have large vacant properties that they'd like to develop. We don't have, we don't have the ability to serve those, and those are in the middle of town. We certainly don't have the ability to serve stuff beyond where we are now. We, there's just, you know, there's nothing out there. And like I said, the transportation, to me, is, that is key. And Pete, you sort of alarmed me when you said that, and maybe, again, if I'm paraphrasing this incorrectly, please correct me. You said that the city was going to be working with ODOT to come up with a way to allow development that makes it safe, and I forget the other word that you used, because I couldn't write fast enough.
That's, the alternative mobility study looks at all modes of transportation, not just vehicles, but it also looks at safeties and safety and that sort of thing. ODOT has to approve any scope of work that the city proposes in order to go through the process to adopt alternative mobility standards. And, and that process has not begun yet.
No, I, yeah, I, yeah, you've been, you've been very good about keeping us in, informed about where we are with that and where that'll be going, and, and, you know, I'm sure we've all thought that, you know, if we could have it done yesterday, that'd be great, but we know that's not gonna happen, and we want this plan to be fairly good the first time. So I'm assuming it's going to take time, and I hope that it takes time because it's too important to, to rush through it. So I just, I guess I'm just having a little bit of, of anxiety about this and the fact that we don't have a planning document that we can rely on for development, because it's, it's not there yet.
Yeah, I mean, the nearest plan we have is the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, which, as you know, has been delayed in acknowledgement for a variety of legal challenges. So, I mean, the applicant notes in their proposal that they've been planning for urbanization of this property for seven, eight, nine years longer. So, I mean, I think there's been a lot of planning done, but we can't get to the point of adopting and implementing these plans because of these legal challenges. So it was a little bit of a catch twenty-two there.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I, and I understand that. Like I said, I, I, I support many, many parts of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. It has nothing to do with the fact that, you know, I don't like development, or I do like development. It's not a liking thing. We have, we have planning.
Yep.
And in, in, in good conscience, I'm looking at this from the standpoint, is, do we have adequate everything? And my answer right now, based on what I know about all of our plans, we don't. So I'm, I'm just, like I said, I'm just a little bit, having a little bit of heartburn, because...
And taking out what Denise said, I've said it before, when we looked at the Beaver Creek Concept Plan or Park Place, I remember Sunnyside, when they built all those homes, and they only had two-lane highway there, and then they had to tear up all the highway and expand it, and it, and it slowed everybody down in the morning and evenings where they expanded the road, which they should have done before they, they built all those homes and expanded all that area up there. Transportation has always been one of my concerns, is to build the infrastructure first and then build it out, because to make all those people suffer through, then a widening of the roads and improving the roads, that's, really drives everybody crazy. That's, I've, I've said that ever since I've sat on this committee, commission.
Everybody's already crazy.
The transportation facilities in the transportation system pla, master plan are pretty detailed in terms of the, the lineage and the project numbers and the associated costs. They're in the staff report, they're in the TSP, and there is a reference to them, so...
What I meant is that it's always that, if everybody tells me, it has to be, all the homes and everything have to be built first, and then there's money to do that, and it's almost, like you said...
Where, where, where's the money?
I know.
There's no money. We, we do not, unless you're...
Horse before, the cart before the horse.
Are you printing them in your, in your, in your basement there?
It was just, again, just, I've always thought that, after Sunnyside.
Well, one, uh, uh, let me just interject. When we talk about roads and infrastructure and all of those parts and pieces, the, the developer is responsible for everything that happens on the site. What we're really concerned about is how to connect point A and C.
And that's what I'm referring to.
And, and so that's really the issue. It's not what they're doing on the site.
Right, and I'm talking about the major roads.
Yeah, I'm not either. I'm talking about, yeah.
It's, it's, we got a hundred and seventeen acre site that could be developed in accordance with the master plan. It's not what they're gonna do within the boundaries of the site.
And that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the road.
It's how they get connected to there.
And, you know, I, I, I agree with what Denise and Tom are saying. I, I think that the issue really is not which end of the road gets built first. It's not necessarily a linear development problem. It's finding the solution to get from...
Point A to point Z.
A to point B, or whatever, point Z. And I think that's really the big question. I, I don't see it as a, a lack of planning. I, I think with the, the master planning, it's been done in the concept plan. There's a lot of planning that's happened. It, it really goes to the point that Bob has made in the past. And if you would just release those hundreds of millions of dollars that you've promised us...
I'm about to release something else in about two minutes.
Okay, that'd be good. You know, I, I think what we're talking about really is a money issue.
Yes, it is money.
It's, it's not a lack of planning. It's a lack of...
Exactly.
Funding for getting the surfaces to that site. And so I, I guess, you know, from my point of view, what Carrie was talking about is that we've got, Carrie and Pete were both talking about, that we've got four steps in the process here. Annexation would be step one, and then we've got zoning, we've got subdivision, and we've got an actual development plan. And the real question, from my point of view, is not, has there been adequate planning to approve that first step? Is, do we have enough confidence in the next three steps that the funding will be identified to make that a viable plan?
Charles, just to, to add on to that, that's why the Park Place Concept Plan was voted down three times. This plan was voted down by citizens because they felt that the, there wasn't enough money there for the roads and the improvement.
Right.
They didn't, weren't against all the property or the buildings. It was, where's the money gonna come from? And are they gonna be taxed more to improve those roads for that, those kind of annexations?
Right, a, and, and that's, that's where I, I, I don't think it's a lack of planning that we're looking at.
No, nobody said it's not lack of, it's, it's no, there's no planning.
It's figuring out whether it's viable economically for the community, not for the developer.
I agree.
I would just feel, you know, more, I think the timing is not appropriate. I think if the Beaver Creek Master Plan was in place, and we've exhausted everything that we've exhausted, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable. This is just sort of...
I think the governor just didn't think this through well enough about letting cities control what the cities are doing.
Again, it's, it's, it's timing, it's timing and infrastructure.
Bob, you, you had some things you wanted to share, or release, as you said.
He's got his millions. I want to see the millions.
Well, let me be petrified of this one for you.
Can you get your mic up there?
Denise, in my judgment, the way I see it, just, it, this is an annexation application. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with annexing these people. The problem I have is the problem that confronts every other city in the metropolitan area. We're broke. We don't have any money to extend our sewers, reconstruct our sewers, implement our transportation plan, and do all the other things that make a city work. We just don't have the financing, and that's part of the plan. We don't have a capital improvements program that would schedule the implementation financially to extend these services to these areas. And we're gonna have to come to grips with that, because that is part of a, of a comprehensive plan. The word is comprehensive. It includes, in my judgment, the financial foundation to implement the, the, the land use plan, and a large share of it is transportation. But the question is, should these people be penalized because the public sector doesn't have the facilities to extend those, those services to the public in general? We're property owners. We're looking to, to improve their property and make use of it. And the answer, like Denise says, is, is no, we don't. The question is, why? Why haven't we taken this elephant on and said, "Okay, now, if we are gonna grow, if we say we're open for business, and we support growth, but we can't afford it, how's that gonna happen?" Now, see, it's just not the planning commissions confronted with this. It's the city commission, because they're the ones that put these financial issues on the ballot, and they're also the one that develop a budget.
But the citizenship shouldn't be penalized for other people to make a profit.
The citizens, Tom, are represented by the elected officials.
But the citizens have continually voted these down because they know the cost.
And they, Tom, they will continually do that.
They got their tax statements like I did today, and it keep going up and down.
And we're looking at a Portland metropolitan area that is overrun with, with a homeless situation, and the price of property is going sky-high. And we're gonna inundate it by a thousand people a month, a thousand families, a thousand people, and it's gonna move south. And now we're ass, asking these people here to bear that burden. And my, my position is, no, no, they shouldn't. They're asking for, to be included within the city. They're taking a chance, too, that we're gonna live up to our commitment to, to provide these urban services. And, you know, this is something that we've got to discuss as a city. And I don't mean that just the planning commission has the obligation. I think the city commission does do, because we're talking about financing this growth, financing a transportation system, financing a water and sewer, uh, system that works, that doesn't overflow, that can, that can maintain the services that, that's expected of us. Now, it reduces that. We get, this whole argument gets reduced to an annexation, and it's kind of silly.
I understand that, Bob, but the thing is, is I saw a lot of signs during the last annexations that, that with annexations, those who develop profit from it, because they make money off their land. In the meantime, the citizens have to pick up the buck.
Well, that, that, I understand that, that argument, too. But, Tom, I mean, uh, growth is coming. It's, it's always been...
But at whose cost?
Pardon me?
But at whose cost should it come? That's what I think the big conversation is.
There's gonna be a cost on both sides of the fence. A cost if it doesn't come, a cost if it does. Because if your tax base is roads, you can't keep up with the cost of running a city. So you've gotta keep that tax base, uh, uh, growing. So you've got to keep that tax base growing. You've got to. And now if we lock the door and walk out tonight and don't do anything, and these people are left holding the bag, you see, is that government in action? No, it's not, in my judgment. I don't want to complicate this thing at this step. We can cross those bridges further on down the road. These people aren't asking anything other than an annexation, for goodness sakes. See, I don't mean to lecture you, but this is my position.
And vice versa. I'm not lecturing. I'm just saying what the, why the annexation went down before.
So I'm going to, I'm going to support this. I support continuing it, yeah, so we get things on the record and what have you. Now, I do have one question. I'll show my ignorance here. Carrie, why does this have to be recorded with the Secretary of State, an annexation?
Because that's what changes the city boundaries. The Secretary of State has the boundaries of the city and that's what formalizes the boundaries.
So that's an ORS? Okay.
Remember, remember back in the olden days when we had the Boundary Commission?
You're looking at me and saying, "Olden"? I'm about as old as you're going to get.
Well, she used, I'm just rephrasing Carrie. She said in olden times earlier. So we used to have a Boundary Commission that dealt with the metropolitan area. Remember, yes, remember? See?
That was back when Bob was a child.
Yeah, so, and they just, I knew if I just jawed your memory, you'd remember that.
Yeah, well, that's the part of the memory that still works.
Because that's what sets our boundaries of our city.
Thank you for indulging me, Charles. I appreciate that. But it's a complicated issue and I don't want this planning commission to complicate it even more. We're smarter than that. We can take it a step at a time and we'll solve the problems as they come.
I don't disagree with you, but we keep kicking the can. You talked about a bigger issue and I'm not talking about this specific request. It's a bigger issue. And we, I say we collectively, not you and me, but we as a community have kicked the can down the road, so we're kicking it down again.
If we had the money.
We don't.
Okay, so I'm saying we got to address that issue.
We've been kicking that can down the road ever since you've lived here.
I think your toll gates would be a great solution.
So I just think it's a matter of timing. I'd feel a lot more comfortable about it if this was coming later than now, but that's just me.
Well, I'm about to write a check, a big one, so.
Yes, we're waiting.
Zach, your thoughts?
I think we should stay simple and focus on the annexation and not the development and the futures that are related to it. But frankly, I think that this discussion will be much better informed when we have a full presentation by staff and by the applicant. So I would reserve a lot of my comments until then and I would be ready to make a motion when you welcome it.
Damon?
I just want to go in record saying I hate that stupid little triangle that's in the middle of here. But, um...
What?
The little chunk that's out of the... But frankly, you know, this property, at some point, whether it's now or 2050 or 2759, is going to be inside the city. So we might as well get it done and then start bringing, you know, if nothing else, the property tax revenue into the city, which can then fund studies and do all those other things that we need to get done for the actual development when it occurs. It's an annexation request. Keep it simple, stupid.
There you go. You just called me stupid. It's the shift. It's also about the future cost. I can't afford more taxes. So I would entertain a motion to continue?
I move that we, do I have to state the exact?
Yes.
To November 14th?
Which page is it? I've got a lot of stuff here now. I'm sorry, there it is right there. I move that we continue AN 16-0003, annexation of Oregon City Golf Course until the November 7th meeting.
No, 14th.
I thought, I heard 7th.
No, November 7th is when the staff report will be ready. 14th is our...
Okay, the 14th, thank you.
I don't want to meet on the 7th. That's okay with you.
Second. Well, that's going to be a four election, you're right.
Commissioner Hankin, was that you on the second?
Correct.
All right. Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Maye?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
See you on November 14th?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, do we have...
Communications.
Communications. And for those in the audience, we're done for tonight. If you wish to testify on the 14th, you're welcome to come back for that. And we do expect to see the applicants back.
And the record is open until the 14th?
The record is open.
So bring all your friends.
We're still on, we're still on, in the meeting, so can't have any conversation. But we'd love to talk the effort over.
I know, Rose, I just...
So Pete, do we have any communications?
I don't have a lot to share. I'm not really prepared to tell you a great deal. Laura Turway is on vacation in Hawaii.
That was way too much information.
TMI.
We pay her for that.
Assistant Planner Trevor Martin will begin working with us on the 31st. He's from Yakima, Washington, has got a lot of experience working in a high-volume, small planning staff situation, which will be helpful to us with a variety of different applications. We're looking forward to having him on board and we'll meet him soon. And that's all I have, but happy to hear any reports you all have.
So I understand he's the person that's taking over the preservation program? What kind of experience does he have in that regard?
Under the tutelage of Christina, but he has worked pretty closely with the Preservation Council, sorry, what is her name, where he's from, with the Yakima on developing guidelines and with some designations and with the National Historic Register process. So they've done a lot of work in downtown Yakima. And so he'll have that local experience. And he's familiar with CEG grant process, Certified Local, sorry, CLG grant process, Certified Local Government Process. Christina had confidence in his abilities and she'll be helping him become familiar with our guidelines and processes as well.
Great. Anything else?
Will we be having any sort of presentation before the November 17th work session that's going to happen for the community on the Lamont Falls Legacy Project?
Legacy, I will look into that. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, it doesn't have to be the consultants, but...
Right, okay.
It'd be nice to have, it'd be nice to have a little bit of a heads up.
Metro or city staff. I believe Christina is preparing for that coming up.
Do we have any update information about the status of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan?
All of the briefing has been done. Oral argument was two weeks ago Thursday. I attended and presented on behalf of the city. Mr. Nacita and Ms. Grazer-Lindsay testified. Luba did not ask a single question or make a single comment. The decision is due November 7th. But Luba can, of course, always ask for extensions. And when they do, we have to grant them. So as soon as the decision is available, I will circulate it to Pete and he will make it available to you.
I was just curious. It's conceivable we could know the result of that before our next hearing on this matter.
I would think that it is likely that you will know the result by this hearing or a subsequent hearing in the event that goes that way.
Okay.
Just for purposes of completeness, the Luba's decision on the Beaver Creek Concept Plan could be appealed to the Oregon Court of Appeals. And that review is by right, so if it is appealed, the court will hear that review, so that could delay things.
So even a decision by Luba may not be final?
Right.
Not until 21 days after its issuance.
It's not over till it's over.
That's right.
Is there a fee involved to take it from Luba to the Court of Appeals?
There is, but it's not much. It's a hundred and fifty dollars, I want to say, maybe a hundred and seventy-five. It's not much.
Spare change. It was somewhere under 400 but over 100 is what I was recalling.
I haven't done a Court of Appeals appeal. We are always the respondent and so the appearance fee for the respondents is a hundred dollars.
There you go.
So I know that. It's less than it is to go to Luba and a Luba appeal is 425.
Okay. Anything else before we adjourn?
Happy Halloween.
Go see Tom's place.
Yes, go to the ghoul gallery and go where...